Mike?
Mike, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Now, on the agenda, can you please stand for the Fudge of Legion? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Next, we have public service announcements. Ian, do you have anything?
I have none.
Mike?
I guess February 20th is World Equity Day. And it's a day that people across the world, it's Social Justice Day, World Social Justice, excuse me. And people from all, in countries all over the world, celebrate social justice. So I just wanted to point that out if people want to check it out on Google or Wikipedia or something that's interesting to read about. That's all.
Hey, Chase?
I have none, thank you.
Mary?
No.
I just have a reminder that the 18th is the last day to take out nomination papers for the annual town election in April, and there are still some slots that people have not taken papers out for. So if you want to get involved, now's your chance. Just call the town clerk to make an appointment, and she'll get you what you need. Okay, next, we have a moment of silence for all those affected by the COVID. Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda at 6:35, we have a poll hearing, National Grid installation of one jointly owned poll on Seven Cove Drive. This is a continuation, and again, though, National Grid is unable to make it because of all their storm preparations. Now, we can either continue this hearing, or if nobody has any questions, you can go ahead and either approve it or disapprove it. What's the board's choice? Hey?
I have no problem going ahead and approving it as long as, you know, all the neighbors are, have been notified and there's nobody here, you know, arguing with it.
Yeah, we do have all the copies of the green card. How's the rest of the board feel?
Just Mike, I'm fine with proceeding with the emotion on this poll.
Hey, Mary, how do you feel?
I'm okay under the circumstances. I just want it to be, you know, due to the weather. I don't want it to become, you know, a basis for them not coming forward another time that we already approved without them being here. Because sometimes when they're explaining something, that's when the questions arise. So I'm okay this time. I just don't want to make it, I just don't want to make it a habit.
Oh, can you hear me?
Hey, Ian?
Wait a minute, there's someone called in?
Yeah, it's Connor Reynolds. I'm from National Grid, I just called in.
Oh, good. Okay, do you want to just give us a quick synopsis, please?
So this is the Cove Drive one, correct?
Yes.
So this is for a new, well, not, the house isn't constructed yet, but it's for a temp service to build the house. The span is too long, so we need to put a new poll for the temp service, and then it would go to the house as well.
Any questions? Okay, it is a public hearing, so Jeff, is there anyone on the phone?
Good evening, is there anyone on the public line that would like to speak to the poll hearing for Seven Cove Drive?
Yes.
Is this about a doc?
No, Judith, this is for a poll hearing. We'll get, Judith will be, you're up, you're coming up.
Okay.
All right. Was there anybody to speak to Seven Cove Drive poll hearing?
I'm sorry, what?
Is there anyone that would like to speak from the public on the public hearing for the poll at Seven Cove Drive?
Oh, no.
No? There's no one to speak to Seven Cove Drive, Madam Chair.
Okay. Is there a motion then to close the public hearing?
This is Mike, and I move to close the public hearing on the poll petition at Seven Cove Drive.
Is there a second?
Okay, I think we're done.
Okay, any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Hey?
Chase, yes.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have the continuation of the poll hearing for the National Grid installation of two jointly owned polls at this stage Hillside Drive. Okay, is National Grid still on the line?
Yep, I'm still here.
Okay, you want to go?
Yep. So this is almost the same sort of situation. There's a new house being constructed at the end of Hillside Drive, and it requires a line extension to serve. Originally, it's going to be just a temp service until the house is constructed, where it'll be fixed permanently.
Any questions from the board? Anybody on the line here?
Yes. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, can you state your name for the board?
Hi, yes, my name's Charles McDevitt, and I'm the one who made the request.
Okay. Mr. McDevitt's on the phone, Madam Chair.
Okay, does anybody have a question of Mr. McDevitt? No? Okay. Any questions from the board again? No? Somebody want to make a motion then to close the hearing?
Hold on, hold on one second. Is there anyone else on the line that would like to speak to 50 Hillside Drive poll hearing? Thank you, Mr. McDevitt. Okay, there's no one else to speak to that application.
A motion to close the public hearing?
So move, Chase.
Second, Mike?
Any discussion? Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Hey, Mike?
Mike, yes.
Chase?
Yes, Chase.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you for calling in.
Mary, Madam Chair?
Yes?
Would it be appropriate to have a motion to approve the both of the poll petitions? Yeah, we closed the hearing, but we haven't voted to approve them. So can I make a motion to approve the poll petition for Seven Cove Drive with the conditions that the polls are located at least five feet from the asphalt surface, and that no underground conduits go through the pavement areas?
Is there a second to that one?
Second, Chase.
Okay. Any discussion? Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes, Mike.
Hey?
Yes, Chase.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
And I vote yes. Mike, you want to make a motion on the other one?
Okay, yeah, as soon as I get to that page. I'd like to make a motion to approve the poll petition for 50 Hillside Drive with the conditions that the polls are located at least five feet from the asphalt surface, and that no underground conduits go through pavement areas.
Second, Chase.
Okay, discussion? Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
Hey?
Chase, yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
And I vote yes. And Michael, thank you for reminding me of the most important part. Next on the agenda, we have department report. First up is Planning Department. Jeanne Dubon, good evening, Jeanne.
Good evening, thank you for having me. Within your packet, you should have my rather lengthy report of the past year. So the report details all of the actions that the Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals and Design Review Committee have taken over the past year, and it also highlights some of the larger projects that I continue to work on, such as the codification, the Green Communities Grants, Historic Preservation Grants, and Bylaw Updates. I don't know if you have any specific questions on anything I've written, but I would just like to highlight some of the projects that we're currently reviewing that are not necessarily detailed in this report. So I think one of the important to note is tomorrow morning, I will be going up to Pilot Travel Center with Nelson Burlingame, our Building Commissioner, to review the property and hopefully grant a temporary occupancy permit so that they can move the store into the new building and start to demolish the existing store. And hopefully that will help to alleviate some of the traffic problems that we're having out there. I think Nelson's probably said this a million times, it's going to get worse before it gets better, so there's light at the end of the tunnel. I think when this is done, it will be a much better workable situation for everybody. And then also, we received information that Caregiver Patient Connection and Heal have both received their provisional approvals from the Cannabis Control Commission, and this allows them to start to get their stores set up so that they can be re-inspected by the Cannabis Control Commission, and actually, both facilities are hoping to be up and running by April. And we are, we have just closed out the Green Communities Grant, and I'll be working with Robin in the coming weeks to review projects to apply for the next round of Green Communities funding. So in the past almost three years, we've taken in nearly $400,000 for energy improvements, and we're hoping to be able to receive another grant to continue on those improvements we've been making. Most recently, we did LED lighting upgrades and weatherization at Burgess Elementary School. This was phase one of the project. When we finish phase three, we're projecting they'll save an average of $20,000 per year in electricity. So it's really a significant saving when we get the project done. It's been great to work with Robin on those, as I coordinate paper and she coordinates the people, so it's working out well. And we're currently reviewing, on behalf of the Planning Board, the parking lot at 420 Main Street, which I won't speak too much about, that's on your agenda in a little while, and a new cold storage facility at 90 Charleston Road. The public hearing will be Tuesday, and we're just about done the staff review on that. And then finally, we're reviewing a small subdivision off of Main Street, that's for Fifth Hill East, and that will be a five-lot subdivision that will have a mix of commercial lots and residential lots. And you might recall the 55 and over, that they presented a conceptual plan to the Planning Board some time ago. They would actually develop on one of the lots on the South Bridge, towards the South Bridge side. So that's kind of a quick overview of a pretty busy workload here. I don't know if you have any specific questions, or if there's anything you'd like me to elaborate on further.
Any questions from the board?
Oh, go ahead, Mike, you first.
Oh, Jeanne, if you're going out to Pilot tomorrow morning?
Yes.
Could you swim by Days Inn and see if there's anybody living there still?
Sure, because I'm not going by myself, I will do that, I'll ask Nelson to go up there.
Yeah, apparently it's under construction, and there was issue with occupancy.
Okay.
I'm sure Nelson knows all about it, I would presume.
Okay, all right, I will mention that to him.
Yeah.
Jeanne, Mary?
Jeanne, thank you, it's very detailed as usual, and a great job on your report. You had mentioned that you think both of the adult-use recreational facilities will be opening in April?
Yes, that's what they believe.
Okay. I just had a question. I don't have the host agreements in front of me, but I have a vague recollection that there was some kind of agreement that both facilities won't open, like, at the same time, that there was going to be a period of time in between so that we don't have the traffic with both of them, say, opening the same week. I know that was my concern. I don't know if it made it into the host agreements or not, but I definitely know that I raised it. So I was just curious, is their language in the host about both facilities? I know it's unusual, but both facilities not opening within a certain time period of each other.
Mary, I'm not sure of that, but I'm sure I can review that tomorrow with Jeff and get back to you.
Okay. I mean, like I said, it was a concern of mine, and I just, without it in front of me, I can't recall if the language ever got put in the host agreement.
I'm not sure, but I'd be happy to check and follow up on that.
All right, awesome. And in terms of the proposed horse trap, you've negotiated the zoning language, and that's where it's sitting right now?
Yes, so we're pretty much final on the zoning language. I did have a conference call with them, I think, a week ago, and we were finalizing some language changes, and we have town council reviewing the amendments. They put in some revisions, and now that's sitting with town council. So I'm hopeful that my piece of this will be done in the next week or two, and it'll move on to the Board of Selectmen and the townspeople to vote.
Now, has the applicant given you any update or town council on this proposed bill to legalize Fort Setting? Because it was, okay, it was my understanding when he came before, I know Jeff's going to give us an update, that it was a non-starter unless some other form of bedding made it lucrative for them. And I know it didn't get passed in the last state, when the state was in session, and now I guess the new bill is going to be introduced. And I had inquired, just because I know the permit, the application itself went from a million to $10 million, and I didn't know if the applicant is still very interested, even at a $10 million application.
I think I'll let Jeff speak to that?
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
The applicant is aware of that proposed legislation, and they would seek a permit even with those conditions. They would seek a permit.
Okay. And do we know how far along? Is anybody, like, watching that legislation? Is it, has it been filed? Is it, when is it supposed to come up? Or does anybody, have you followed it, Jeff, or council's been following it?
We can find out where it is, I've not followed it.
Okay, if council could, I'd be interested in knowing.
Anything else from the board? Hey, Jeanne, thank you for the report, and I'm sure you're here for another issue, too.
I am. You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks, Jeanne.
You're welcome.
The Department of Public Works, good evening, Butch.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have the length that Jeanne has in my reports, they're pretty generic. This time of year, we don't do a whole lot of special things, no paving or anything like that, so I'm just going to open up the questions. Mike, just so you know, we're doing some training for First Aid and Flagler coming up, just try to preempt the question. Other than that, it's pretty generic, we've just been dealing with snow and ice more than anything right now. If you have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
No.
How's it all going, though, Butch, with the out and sand?
Going. Well, the nation will slow down, they'll feel better off, but it's going.
Not going to slow down this week, Butch.
I know, I know, I've been looking.
Well, you never know, they're usually wrong. I mean, even today's storm was not the duration they said.
No, it wasn't the ice buildup they said either.
No.
That was good.
Nothing else for us?
No. Sorry.
Okay, well, that's okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Butch.
Have a good night.
Yeah, I'm going to sit down. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the Town Administrator's Report, Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's extensive, and a lot of it comes up from our retreat. I would call your attention to particularly number two on the first page, the LED streetlights. If you get a chance to visit any of these communities at night, you can see the lights that National Grid would install in town if you would like them to convert the lights to LED. That way, you get an understanding of what those lights look like, and then get back to me, and if that's what we want to do, we can request National Grid make those changes. The road condition report we sent to you, the dog park update, the Rec Commission is proposing 70 Cedar Street, and there's no timeframe for that project. They just, that's their preferred site. We are going to move forward with the solicitation for a radio consultant. As you know, our public safety radio system is very old, so the staff level committee will be soliciting proposals to bring back to the board and to town meeting for the development of a plan to replace the radio system. And we'll bring that back to you as we go along. This will include police, fire, administration, schools, and EPW on one system that is interconnected and can talk to one another. Couple other items, the McGilpin Road water issue. As I stated, the most recent DEP testing for the landfill was 2,600 pages of information, kind of trying to boil that down into something to communicate to the residents. The USGS last testing took place in 2018, and those results are not available yet, so we're trying to figure out what we can inform the residents. DEP is still recommending they visit the website, there is a website with information on it, but the last update was 2017. So we're still trying to weed through this information to bring something to the residents. I do have a map of the area and a list of the residents in the testing area, but it's the messages that needs crafting. We have writer first refusal, status on how much betterment funds are going to be available. You could see substantially less than the prior year due to the impact on the hotel industry in town from COVID. Local routes, as you heard from Jeanne, they're going to open sometime in April, and we heard today that Heal is getting close to open, and we will find out about the timing of these openings, and they'll also have to coordinate with the Police Department for their opening since, for the first period of time, initial opening period, they'll give details at the locations. And that's what I had. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Jeff?
Just a... Mary? Thanks, Jeff. It's not really a question, but on the McGilpin Road water issue, I know you're working on it to give them detailed information with DEP, which is great. I think I was the one that kind of initiated letting them get something, and I think there was a caller on the line that lived on the road that kind of echoed that sentiment. But even just a letter similar to what we got, you know, that kind of update, is even helpful, you know? I wasn't really thinking, I know, 2,600 pages, but we got at least an update on what kind of testing has been done and what they found. So, you know, even, in my view, even a general letter that is similar to the information the board got, I think it's a good starting place. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but that's kind of what I had in mind.
Okay, any comments from the board? Now, that sounds fine, because I do believe that's what we had sent out quite a few years ago when they first started doing the testing, just a general letter, right?
Okay, I will work on that.
Okay, Jeff? Okay, so next, we have our action items, and the first one is consideration and comments on the proposed parking lot expansion at 420 Main Street. We're looking at this as the Water Commission. Jeanne or Jeff, who would like to explain?
I'll let Jeanne do it, she's much more familiar. And Mr. Gagne, the owner of the property, is on the line this evening as well.
So this, as you will recall, there was a recent zone change to rezone a portion of land, approximately one acre of land situated behind 420 Main Street for the expansion of the parking lot. And this expansion of the parking lot would be to serve existing tenants and functions that take place at 420 Main, and then also to allow for the opening of one additional function room on the premises. So the property is located within the Groundwater Protection District, pretty much all of the commercial tourist district is. And those of you that were on the board when Cumberland Farms was renovated might recall doing this. There's a section in the Groundwater Protection District that says, "The Planning Board, as special permit granting authority, shall grant a special permit if it determines, in conjunction with the Public Works Director, Board of Health, Conservation Commission, and Board of Selectmen acting as water commissioners, that the intent of Chapter 16 and the criteria set forth within the chapter are met." So we have conducted our staff review, and we have also conducted a peer review of the project, and I have provided my report, as well as staff reports and peer review reports, to be included in your packet this evening. We have concluded that the project as proposed does meet the requirement. We're here this evening just to see if the Board of Selectmen has any further comments or questions, or if you want to vote that you have no concerns, that would be wonderful. I have with me this evening Mr. Van Gagne, the property owner, property manager, and Mr. Pete Engel from McClure Engineering, who would be happy to answer any specific questions you might have about the Groundwater Protection District.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I remember one, a couple, a year or two ago, when they put a transformer in, there was containment around the transformer because it's in the Water Protection District, so I don't have any problems with this at all.
Okay, anyone else? Okay?
Yeah, no, I, yeah, no, I will be in upgrade with all the influence, positive thing.
Okay, Ian on the air?
No, I'm on board. I thought that is... It's very thorough, and I think it's a good thing.
Okay. Would somebody then please be willing to make a motion to approve as water commissioners?
This is Mike, and I would like to make a motion that the Board of, the Select Board approved the parking lot expansion application for 420 Main Street as water commissioners.
At 420?
At 420. Did I say 420 Main Street?
You said 20.
Oh, forgot the four.
That's okay, we're even now, Mike.
It's not a year ago.
Mary, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Mary?
Mary, yes.
Chase?
Chase, yes.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you Jean and, uh, good luck Dan as usual.
Thanks Dan.
Thanks Dan, it's like, it's nice to see we're moving forward with expansions even during the pandemic. Help our local economy.
Yeah, we, we're moving full steam over there. I'm not sure how we would have, if there's any silver lining to the pandemic, I don't know how we would have got all this work done running full steam, but, um, I guess I would have rather tried that than what we're going through now, but, uh, you know, we'll be, uh, you know, after June, we'll be fully ready to, um, you know, handle all the, the brides that are excited to get married that have been putting their, their special day off for so long, so, um, it'll help us tremendous, tremendously, you know, to, uh, to recover what we've lost over these months, so. Having additional capacity is gonna be a great thing, so. And we received over, you know, these months too, it's, um, worth noting, we've had just great support from everybody in the town, from our takeout business and, you know, buying, you know, buying takeout orders and family style meals and that kinda thing, keeping us going. We really appreciate it. So, if you're one of those folks that
Frozen.
I think you froze.
Either comes in and sees us or buys us very much, so, thank you much.
Thank you for staying open.
Thanks Dan.
Have a good evening folks, we'll see you soon.
Bye Dan.
Good night. Next we have consideration
Thanks Peter.
On a temporary dock permit for the property 288A block road extension.
The owner of the property, Ms. Judith Ross is on the phone. Let me turn up the phone.
Yes, I am on the phone.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Go ahead, we can hear you.
Yeah, do you want me to say? I just want, I want I just want the dock that I applied for, that's all.
Yes, um.
The dock does meet our
Anybody ha-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Anybody have any questions?
It does meet our regulations. There was an existing, there was a dock there before, but this one will replace that one. Seems a straight up request.
Well, it does, but in, in the writing, it makes it sound like dock. And yeah, about a second dock.
I think what you, what she's quoting, there's, if you look at the sketch, there's a, there's a piece of the dock that extends off the, the long piece to the left. I think that's what she's
Right, right.
And even with that square footage, it still does not exceed the square footage in the regulations.
Still under the 200 guys. Okay, any questions?
Yeah, it's on
Okay, somebody wanna make a motion then?
I'll, uh, I'll make the motion to approve the dock permit as requested.
Mike, second.
Okay, any discussion? Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Chase?
Yes, Chase.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next we have
Thank you very much.
They will get in touch with you this week to get you the permit.
On a taxi cab delivery license?
We'll be in touch tomorrow to work out the permit with you.
Okay, thank you.
Jeremy Bustamante at Charles River Service Inc. doing business as Sturbridge Car Service.
Yes, that's me. I'm Jeremy.
Okay, is there any question or comment?
Jeremy is on the phone. If you have any questions to Jeremy?
No, I don't have any questions. Um, well, actually not, I'm, I'm just curious if I'm, if I'm gonna be permitted for the taxi service.
Say again, Jeremy?
I, I'm just, um, wondering what's going on with my application, that's all.
Well, it's before the board to vote on.
I'm sorry, what?
The board's reviewing your application this evening and will, and will consider it, so, if they have any questions, they'll, uh, they'll be asking you here in a second.
Okay.
Okay, are there any questions? The chief of
No.
Has signed off on it. Okay, so if there's no questions, uh, comments, somebody wanna make a motion?
I do have a question. Under item eight, risk previous experiences operating a vehicle for hire. Do you have any experience? Uh?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Do you have any experience as a taxi cab driver?
Jeremy, do you?
Um, um, no, I don't have any experience, however, I do drive.
Just wanted to make sure that wasn't, uh, left blank for no reason. Okay. Um, that's my, my one question, so.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, is there a motion then to approve, uh, just approve the application?
This is Mike and I'll make a motion to accept the application or approve the application for Jeremy, uh, Bustamante, uh, for a taxi cab, livery license at Charles River Service Inc., uh, contingent upon paying for the application fee.
Do you have a second?
Second, Chase.
Dustin? Okay, Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Chase?
Yes, Chase.
Mike?
Mike, votes yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay, Jeremy, you're all set. We'll get with you tomorrow to process the light, the application, okay?
Alright, thank you so much. Good luck.
Okay, next we have consideration and possible acceptance of a gift of $250 from the Federated Church of Sturbridge in Fitzdale to the Sturbridge Fire Department. Any questions? Someone wanna make a motion?
I, I'll make the motion to accept the donation.
Do you have a second?
Second, Chase.
Okay, discussion? Mike, how do you vote?
Mike votes yes.
Okay.
Chase, yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next we have consideration and possible acceptance of a gift of $250. Oh, sorry.
I think we went out of order.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I, that's correct.
So, consideration and possible acceptance of a donation of two pallets of PPE from Ocean State Jaw Block to the Sturbridge Fire Department. Any questions, comments, motion?
This is Mike. I, I make a motion to accept the gift with thanks and authorize the use of, uh, PPE to support the Sturbridge Fire and police departments.
I'll second Mike's motion. Ian?
Questions? Mike, how do you vote?
Mike votes yes.
Chase?
Chase, yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda, we have consideration and possible action on the manager for caregiver patient connection. Okay, and I see we have Catherine here.
And Dean, don't forget Dean.
Dean?
Yeah, Madam Chair, the, uh, HCA with, uh, the retail marijuana establishments provide that the board may, uh, approve the manager. Um, it's left open, but since, uh, uh, they've requested your approval of the manager for their, their shop. So, we've provided the information on their proposed manager. And if you have any questions, both Dean and Catherine are here this evening. Chief Dessert has
Okay, and
Says it's fine.
Right, and the candidate is also here. Good evening, Megan. Okay, anyone have any questions for anybody? Okay, somebody wanna make a motion then?
This is, this is, uh, local roots now. Am I correct? Is that's what?
Yes.
So, this is, so is, are we gonna call it caregiver or are we gonna call it local roots as far as the manager position? Is it still, uh, Cannabis Control Commission, is it? What's, what's the official name of the facility?
I, I can answer, I can answer that, Mike. Um, so, we, we went through your board a few months ago to get the approval for, for a name change. We've submitted the application to the commission, but they, th- those applications can sometimes take, you know, six, seven months. So, we're technically still CPC or caregiver patient connection until they
Just wanted to clarify that. Uh, that's my only question.
Okay.
Mary?
I just had a quick question. Are you planning to have an assistant manager too when Megan can't be there or is she gonna be it?
Yeah, so, so Megan, um, Megan took over, um, the general manager position back in, um, Pittsburgh last year. And, you know, she put together in a staff and modeled it, the way we're gonna model Pittsburgh, so she's gonna come to, um, Sturbridge and she'll, she'll put the systems in place, she'll do the hiring, she'll get the team together. And she'll be there in Sturbridge with an assistant manager with the intention of the assistant then being elevated to a general manager. So, Meg will then ultimately go to Marlboro and then after that, take over the whole retail director job of the whole company.
Okay, so she's kinda transitioning in to train and then she's gonna move on?
Yeah, I would expect that she'll be here at least, at least four or five months. And, and even when she moves on to Marlboro, that Sturbridge will still be under her, her guidance and her leadership.
Now, will the assistant manager come before us as well?
Yes, we're required to do that by the HBA, so once, once we find that person. We have a job fair, um, we have a job fair set up for Saturday the 27th. And actually talking with Megan earlier, um, the response was so great, we actually added a second day. Um, you know, just to try to attract local talent and, um, we've got quite a few who've been acquired, so we're hopeful that we're gonna find someone local that can ultimately take over the GM job there.
Okay, thank you Dean.
Um, I just did clarify one of the things. Jean had earlier in her, in her, um, report, uh, mentioned that both Heal and, and we, we received our, um, provisionals. We actually last week at the Cannabis Control Commission meeting received our final license. So, um, the next step is they come in for a final license inspection and that, we've already moved product into the, into the facility, which is the next step, and so, um, we, we are kinda on target for an early April opening, very much so now.
Okay. This is off subject from the general manager, but since you're here, I'll ask you. Um, how is the prospect for renting the other half of your building? That moving along?
Uh, yeah, you know, I, I don't, you know, we have some inquiries. Um, there was a Starbucks that was interested, but they wanted, required a drive-through and technically don't have enough property for, for a drive-through in, in the building yet. Um, it, it can't say it's been really hot, but I think part of that may have to obviously do with COVID. And, you know, now that we're coming into the spring and things are looking a little bit more optimistic, we're, we're optimistic that, you know, we'll, we'll start to get more interest in it. We're, we're trying to find the right, we're trying to find the right pairing. You know, the gym would have been great, but COVID wiped them out. Um, you know, it's not our intention to, we, we, we wanna find the correct pairing to, to go with our, our business. It won't be first come, first served as far as who we put in there.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, someone wanna make a motion then?
This is Mike and I'd like to make a motion to approve Megan, uh, Pedo Nuchowski as manager for the caregiver patient connection, uh, located at 365 Main Street.
Do you have a second?
Second, Chase.
Okay, any discussion? Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Chase?
Chase, yes.
Mike?
Mike votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, congratulations and thank you for coming in.
Thank you. We'll see you, uh, we'll make sure we keep you informed as we get closer to the date.
Thank you.
Good luck.
It'll be spring. Okay, have a good night.
Safe travels.
Okay, next. Next we have a consideration and possible action on a license for private water line under Public Way at 116 Wallace Road. Jeff?
Yes, um, the owners of 116 Waller, Wallace Road, Ms. Boniface would like to proceed with the license with or without the, the sale of the property. Um, she thinks it's important to get this in place. Um, she was willing to provide the insurance. I spoke with her insurance company and worked out the details. Um, the license was written by town council. Um, if you look at my memo, the insurance pieces, the automobile liability and workers' comp would only be required in the event a contractor was actually working on the scene. But the property owner would carry the general liability and the umbrella all the time that the license is active. Um, this is a, uh, it is revocable by the board of selectmen. And, uh, the property owner would like to move forward with that. I think they may be on the phone. Let me see if Ms. Boniface is on the phone. Hello, Ms. Boniface, are you on the phone? She's not with us this evening. Um, they're still negotiating the sale of the property. That's where we are.
Okay, any questions from the board? Any other questions?
What? You know, I, I see that the license says that, you know, refers to chapter 84, section 1, but that, I, I don't think that would, gives us the authority to issue licenses. So, I don't, you know, I, where do we get the authority to issue a license?
I can follow that up with town council. Um, it was their recommendation to go this way since any easements would have to be granted by town meeting. Um, this was
Yeah.
Town council's recommendation is if the board of selectmen wanted to provide immediate relief to the property owner, uh, we could do the license. So, you're asking for
Yeah, I, I Yeah, I, I would, I hope the, the board, you know, approves it, but I, I don't, you know, I, I know, uh, I know we have the authority to grant the permit, but apparently that's not good enough. But, uh, they want a license, so, that's something.
I, I'm lost, Mike.
I, I don't know. I don't know. I've never, never heard of granting a license over a, a public way, but.
Okay.
It's towns and cities issue permits all the time.
And, and we would issue a permit in the event they had to dig up the road. They would come back in for a permit to do so. This allows the water line to be under the road. This provides insurance to the town in case that water line damages the road and then damages a private vehicle, someone driving on the road. Uh, it ensures, it indemnifies the town for that water line being under the road, so.
Yeah.
It's no
Yeah, it usually is. Usually it's an indemnity agreement as part of the permit. Yeah, usually it's, usually it's an indemnity agreement as part of the permit. I mean, we... You know, we issue permits for driveway to be, for people to fill the driveway within a public way or...
But they're not...
Not just to dig the road, it's to put anything that goes within the public way that basically would require a permit. I, I don't know. I... I, I've never seen a license in this application ever.
I would, I would think it's similar to a franchise with a private utility.
Even...
That's really what this is. This is a private utility that's underneath the public way.
Yeah, well, we just granted a permit to construction, a poll, then grant them a license. It was a permit, two poll permits this evening.
But they already have access to the public right of way. The utility...
Not with all of us approving the permit.
I, I will reach out to town council and ask for a statutory reference on what allows the town to issue a license. That's no problem on whatsoever.
I mean, Mike, license is just basically a contract. It's a licensing agreement as a contract and we have authority to enter into contract. I don't know. I mean, check, checking...
I just haven't seen that applied and I asked a question and I suggested that a permit would have the same effect, but...
Well, Jeff, isn't this the way council suggested though?
Yes.
Hey, Chase, how do you feel?
I'm going to abstain from this one just because it's a distant relative.
Okay, Ian, how do you feel?
Is this, is this water line existing already and now they're coming back for a permit or this is already existing and then now they want to...
This, this house was built in seventeen, in the 1770s. This well has been there a long time. The issue is, the issue is they're selling the house separate from the parcel that holds the well. So, the mortgage company financing the house wants to make sure that there's a water supply for the house and that they can fix the water line in case it, it collapses. So, this is to secure, this is to help the buyer secure a mortgage.
I mean, I don't... Butch? Oh, no.
I'm here.
If I put two...
Yeah, I'm here.
Want to add something?
No, she called me a while back and just like, just like Jeff said, the well is, the well is across the street and a piece of property that she owns. And if she ever needs to replace that line, she just, you know, the buyer wants to make sure they'll have access to that line and they'll be able to get to it. I mean, I don't think there's an issue at this point, but in the future, she definitely wants to make sure that she can sell the house and that the new owners will have access to their well if they need to.
It's so unreasonable. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the license contingent upon receipt of the necessary insurance coverage.
Okay. I'll second that. Any discussion? Hey, Ian, how do you vote? Oh, Mary, I'm sorry.
I am, I am going to vote for it, but maybe to satisfy Mike and because we haven't done this in the past, maybe we should have something in writing. Maybe he, our, a town council already gave it to Jeff, you would know, but something in writing that says, you know, we have authority to do it and it, we're doing it at council's recommendation rather than wait to grant an easement. Since we haven't done it, I think it's good to get something in writing from council.
Okay, Ian, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Okay.
I'm going to abstain.
Hey, Mike?
Uh, I, I'm going to abstain as well.
Okay, and I vote yes, so that's three, zero, two. Okay, thank you, Butch.
Yep, my follow.
Um, does, does the board agree though to get something in writing from council saying that this was their recommendation to us?
I, I will provide that, but since they wrote a license, I think, you know, I'm...
I didn't hear you, Jeff, I'm sorry.
Well, town council did write the license.
I know, but that's different than what I'm ask, I mean, that's still different than what I'm asking for.
That's fine. I can get you whatever you want.
That's more, what I'm asking for is more an opinion letter that we're following their advice as opposed to us asking them to prepare a license for us. We're doing it at their advice. It's a little bit different.
Sure.
So, when does this license end?
It, it's, it's open-ended, but revocable by the Board of Selectmen.
And it's not a contract?
No, it's not a contract.
If it doesn't have an ending date, it's not a contract.
Right.
Well, most licensing agreement, most licenses are contracts. I don't know. I've never...
A permit can be for an indefinite period of time. A license, if, if it's a contract, has to be for a specific period of time. At our last meeting, I tried to point that out.
So, you can check on that, the difference between license and permit.
And I've also, now that we're at it, again, I, I agree with it. I've never heard of a license running with the land. Usually an easement runs with the land, but typically a license doesn't if, if you look at property law. So, maybe this is a license of a different animal. But typically, I mean, that's the distinction between the two. A license doesn't run with land, but a permit, but a easement does. So, if we can revoke it at any time, then, then it's not running with the land. So, I'd be surprised if the bank didn't come back at some point and say, we do want an easement at, at, you know, but that's just, if this satisfies them, this satisfies them. But if something is revocable, then it's not running with the land.
Well, the reason why it's revocable is you cannot, you, the Board of Selectmen, cannot provide a non-revocable access to a public way. That would be an easement. And that would take town meeting approval. The issue we have is that they want to sell the property and this is your...
I follow it.
And this is your way to provide relief to that property.
No, Jeff, I, I follow everything, but I had raised at the last meeting that I didn't think it ran with the land and I thought at that point in time, you said that it did.
It doesn't.
I'm just surprised that this, hold on. I'm just surprised, I'm, I'm just surprised this satisfies the bank because it just gets to the selling point, but it doesn't do anything in terms of that piece of property being able to be sold again, because when they do the title search, they're going to see that it didn't run with the land. That's all. I'm just surprised that they're not, that this isn't a temporary fix and that they wouldn't want an easement at town meeting, that's all. But if they don't want it, they don't want it, so that's fine.
Well, we don't...
It's not our problem.
We don't know yet if this satisfies the lender's bank.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we knew it satisfied them.
No, this is the best, this, this is the best we can do short of an easement.
Oh.
And it's still being reviewed by the lender's bank. So, the owner tonight is asking for the license because if this falls through with this lender or this property owner, they still have something they can try to use with another buyer and don't have to go through this again. Now, we may be back for an easement, but that's going to be subject to later on. Right now, they just want the license.
Okay, but we don't know if, if this will ultimately satisfy the bank's attorney. All right, I get it. I'm happy with a license that's revocable.
Question?
Yeah.
Okay, next, the agenda is consideration and possible action on the appointment of Police Chief Earl Desert to the Betterment Committee.
Well, B U H.
Oh.
What?
I keep checking out things I haven't done. Now, you know my alphabet. A consideration of possible actions on a store and water rate study. Any questions on the report Jeff gave us? Hey, someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to... From tying lines, sewer, for sewer and water rate study and authorize the board chairman to sign the contract, Chase.
Hey, is there a second?
Mike, I will second that motion.
Hey, session? Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Okay.
Chase, yes.
Hey, Mike?
Mike, yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, now, I, consideration of possible action on the appointment of Police Chief Earl Desert to the Betterment Committee. Any questions? Your motion?
Mary, you want to vote?
Bye, Mary.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we appoint Police Chief Earl Desert to the Betterment Committee.
And I'll second Mary's motion, Ian.
Okay, any discussion? Hey, Mike, how do you vote?
Mike votes yes.
Chase?
Chase, yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The next consideration of possible action on the waving of site plan application fee to 501 Main Street Parking Lot Project. Any questions on that?
This is just to waive the fee?
Yes.
This is Mike and I'll make a motion to waive the site plan application fee for the 501 Main Street Parking Lot Project.
Second, Chase.
Hey, discussion? Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Chase?
Yes, Chase.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next, consideration and possible referral to the Planning Board, Post Amendment Chapter 3, Establishment of District of the Sturbridge zoning bylaw. Hey, any questions?
This has to do with updating blood plane, uh, bylaw?
That's correct.
Do you have any packet, Mike?
Yes, uh, and if, you know, this is for referral to the Planning Board, which will hold a public hearing where, where the public can have input and make comment. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Yes, that's the way it goes.
So, I'd like to make a motion to refer the proposed changes to Chapter 3 of the Sturbridge zoning bylaws to the Planning Board in accordance with Chapter 48, Section 5 of the Massachusetts General Laws.
This is Ian, I'll second Mike's motion.
Any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Chase?
Yes, Chase.
Mike?
Mike votes yes.
Hey, Ian?
Ian, yes.
Okay, and I vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and before we get to old business, one other thing we need to vote on, we voted in executive session, but we need to make a public vote on approving the contract for Police Chief Earl Desert. Your motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion to approve the contract with Earl, Earl Desert.
There a second?
Second, Chase.
Jeff?
Just to clarify, retroactive to date of appointment, please.
Hey, you want to add that, Ian?
Yep, I'll make a motion to accept the contract with Earl Desert, retroactive to date of employment.
Okay, and that was what, December 12th or something like that?
Yeah, mid-December, something like that, yeah.
Okay. Hey, who made a second?
I'll second, Chase.
Hey, session, Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, yes.
Chase?
Yes, Chase.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Hey, old business, COVID update, Jeff?
Um, yeah, you have a report in the, in the packet. One of the interesting developments over the weekend, CVS in Sturbridge and Palmer both received 500-plus doses. And over the weekend, the Council on Aging in the town put out information with the Board of Health and helped register eligible residents. My information this afternoon says over 350 people so far as of today have been vaccinated at CVS and all the appointments that are available have been taken. So, a tremendously successful event. Todd Smola was instrumental in helping bring those doses to Sturbridge. And he is, I expressed our gratitude to him for that help, but overall, it was a great weekend for getting people vaccinated. Leslie Wong and her staff were helping people register all weekend long and making appointments, so that was tremendous.
Okay, Jeff, I'd like to publicly thank Leslie for all her hard work with CVS Corporate in getting the folks who had been first inoculated in Connecticut able to go down and get their second shot. And then I do know she passed on kudos to you for help pushing all this from the beginning, so good job, everyone.
She's fantastic. She is fantastic.
Ian, any old business?
Uh, can I just add something to the COVID?
Oh, Mary?
Um, I just do want to let the board know, I, I agree, um, thank you, Jeff and Leslie, and we're in a good place in Sturbridge. I know the Board of Health is working hard too with, um, using both Palmer and of course, Harrington Hospital. I did attend the, um, by telephone, some of the February 11th Board of Health public information where they kind of set out what they've done and they had the public nurses and it was informative. But just to let the board know, I, I did also express my, what I used the word disappointment and I only spoke for myself. I didn't, and I made a point of saying I'm not speaking for the board, but I will let other members know, I did let them know that I was disappointed that they declined the invitation to also come to our meeting as an agenda item to give us an update. And, um, because it was my view that, I think it's great they had an informational meeting and I hope a lot of residents watch. They, the Board of Health is working hard, but sometimes different residents watch different meetings. And I didn't think it was an either or. I thought they could have their own informational one and also come to ours, because I did point out that, at least since I've been on the board, anytime the Board of Health has requested our chair, which has been Mary for many years, to come before us, I don't think we have ever declined. And I would like to try to keep the channels of communication open so that in the future that they would come before us. So anyways, I just wanted to share that with the board because that was my view and that's what I said. But I, I do agree, Sturbridge is in a good place with Jeff, Leslie, and they are working hard too with Harrington. So, anyway, I just wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you. Ian, any old business?
I have none.
Mary?
Um, I don't have old.
Chase?
No old, thank you.
Mike?
I don't have old business.
And I don't have any old business? New business? Mike?
No new business.
Chase?
Uh, no new, thank you. No new, thank you.
Mary?
Yeah, I just have a couple. I'm wondering if, at an upcoming meeting, if we might review the senior work study, senior work program that we have in place, where eligible seniors get a discount on their real estate taxes. I don't know, I was looking, I don't know if that's just our policy or if it was by bylaw, but I think they're at, I believe it's $500. Is that right, Jeff? That's what it used to be, that you could work off $500 of your taxes.
I don't remember the exact amount.
I don't, I don't know what the amount is, but I want to revisit that and perhaps consider increasing that. I think it's been at that amount for many years, and I think we're in a position perhaps to consider increasing that. So I'm hoping that maybe Jeff and Barbara can get together some information for us to peruse, like, how many seniors take advantage of it, how many seniors qualify that don't, and what the impact would be if we increased the, you know, amount by, say, 25% or whatever the current amount is. I thought it was 500, but I'd like some narrative about if we, if the rest of the board agrees and we do try to increase it, what kind of financial impact it would have on the town. Because I know taxes, we held the taxes constant last year, but they have gone up quite a bit over the years, and we really haven't changed that amount for the eligible seniors in a number of years. And also, when it did last increase, that kind of information.
Okay.
That would be my new business. And also, we got notice that Annie Rossioli has stepped down from her role on the Special Events Committee, and Mary Lou Volpe is taking the recreational seat. But I don't know, I know we created that board, that committee through our previous town administrator, Leon, and we had approved it. I don't know if we also need to accept Annie's resignation, and you're answering no, Jeff?
No, it was developed at the town administrator level, with appointments from various positions, from various groups, so.
But I think that, no, it was, but I think most committees, he still introduced it to us, and I think that we approve committees.
No, I don't find a record of-
And I don't know if any committees-
I don't find a record of the Board of Selectmen approving this committee.
Well, it definitely came before us, we'll have to look at the meeting minutes, because Leon had asked for who would volunteer to be on it, and everybody voted, you know, I volunteered, and we all voted affirmatively. Mary, do you have recall, because I can go back and look?
I watched the meeting, I watched it, I watched that June meeting, and it was a simple, from Leon, I created this committee, is there a board member that wants to serve on it? You volunteered, they voted for you to be in that seat, and that was it. The board never endorsed the-
Yeah, we didn't. No, and we didn't vote on the other people, I don't believe.
Okay.
Right.
I don't recall voting Annie on or any other member on the events committee.
No, just, okay. Mary? Anything else under there?
No, that's it.
Ian, did I ask you?
You did, I have none.
Okay. The only new business I have is Jeff's evaluation. I will have Alex send two copies of the evaluation to the board. Jeff?
I was given an opportunity to make revisions or comments on that, and I have not sent that to you all yet for review. I hope to by the end of the week.
Oh, I didn't know you were going to review the formals. I thought you wanted to have time to review the evaluation.
Well, we talked about two things. One, I get a chance to agree on the evaluation tool, and I get a chance to respond to any concerns before they become part of the evaluation.
Okay, that's fine. Could you get it?
As soon as possible.
Well, because there's timeline, we're supposed to do it by your anniversary date.
I will not have those dates in the contract.
Okay. Everybody remember that. Mary, you have a question?
You still have a record?
Well, I guess what, it almost should be an agenda item, so that we can go over, I mean, whatever Jeff may propose to change the agreement or not, I mean, I'm sorry, not the agreement, the evaluation, we may have no problem with that, and think it's a better evaluation, or we might not. So I do think it probably needs to be an agenda item. Also, we did talk about him responding, but I'm not sure we kind of laid out exactly how that's going to happen. It might be different for all of us, so, yeah, I do think that it needs to be kind of, we talked about it, but I didn't think we reached any firm agreement at our retreat.
Okay, so Jeff, you can look at the tool and get that to us, we'll discuss it at our next meeting. And March is a pretty long month, as a matter of fact, so we should have time to get the form out to the board and to them all to get it back to me. And the important part, remember, is your copy of yours goes to Jeff, and you should really discuss it with Jeff before we make a compilation of all the responses. Okay? Okay, next, we have correspondence. Mike?
Yes. On January 29th, we received a letter from CMRPC, which is Transportation Staff on the annual development of the 2020 to 2026 transportation improvement program and the project listings on that program. Also, on January 29th, the town administrator received an email from Brendan Sweeney regarding updates on vaccinations and our FEMA reimbursement funding. On January 30th, the town administrator received a letter from John Mayer, Director of Government Affairs for Charter Communications, again with upcoming changes to the lineup. On February 1st, we received the newsletter from the community food collaborative, the newsletter is called The Dur- Horton, and it's news from the garden.
Okay, Mike, could I just interrupt for a minute? That newsletter is still about the contest for designing a T-shirt, and the deadline's been extended to the 17th, so the information is all online about that, if anyone wants to enter. Thanks, Mike.
To design the T-shirt for the garden. The, on February 3rd, the town administrator received an email from Tom Chamberlain regarding trail activity in 2020, and a summary of what the Trails Committee did, or the work that was done on the trails, anyhow. February 4th, the town administrator received a letter from Nicholas Annam Wallace, Lake Shore Eagle LLC, regarding Cannabro LLC and a public hearing notice. But that was generally about a public hearing that's coming up. When, I don't have the date on that handy, but. To move on, on February 5th, we received, the town administrator received an email from Ryan Melville, Deputy Executive Director of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, and this was, again, an update, Alcohol Beverages Control Commission Advisory regarding increasing retailer capacity limits to 40%. I believe it had been at 25% previously. February 8th, the chairman, chair of the select board, received a letter from Central Mass Mosquito Control Project with their annual form, SRV1, for, and that lists their program for the coming year, I believe. The, on February 8th, we received, the chair received a letter from Mike Sullivan, Early Environmental Coordination, regarding the bridge on Shampel Road over Long Pond. The, on February 8th, the town administrator received a letter from Lois Ruinog and Fran Caphales, from the Last Green Valley, regarding October 2021's planning activities. February 8th, the chair received a letter from the Director of the U.S. Census Bureau regarding boundary and annexation survey. And on February 10th, Charter Communications sent a letter to the town administrator from John Mirror, Director of Government Affairs, and again, it's, well, this time it was our annual complaint form, that Charter has to list all of the complaints they've received throughout the year 2020. On February 12th, also, the town administrator received notification from the Conservation Commission regarding notice to Abadis for locations at 96 Shattuck Road. And today, I believe, we received correspondence from Berthium and Berthium regarding a notice that they want to take the property owned by Spencer Sauer off of, it's off of Fiskill Road, and I forgot the actual address of the property, but it's the property just west of Fiskill Road that's owned by Spencer Sauer, they want to take it out of Chapter 61 and sell the property, and the buyer wants to develop two house lots. So, and that's all the correspondence we've had up till today.
Okay, now Jeff, we will be sending that notice to the other boards, because it is the town's right of first refusal?
It has been sent, yes.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Okay, and, oh, no, go ahead, Jeff.
Regarding the boundary and annexation survey, we have processed that, there's been no changes to the boundaries, so we've reported that to the Census Department.
Okay. And I do want to say again this year, with the Charter Communication Report, I'm always astounded at the low numbers they give, because those are not the number of complaints we hear. But, just for the record, okay, anyone else have any correspondence? Okay, next, we have approval with minutes of February 1st. Does anyone have any corrections? Hey, someone want to make a motion then to approve as written?
I'll make a motion to approve the February 1st meeting minutes as written.
This is Mike, and I'll second Mary's motion.
Any discussion? Ian, how do you vote?
I abstain from the vote.
Ace? Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ace, how do you vote?
I have to abstain as well.
Hey, Mike, how do you vote?
And I will vote yes.
And I vote yes, so that's three, zero, two. Do you have Citizens Forum?
It's 7:54, I think we're going to end at exactly the same time as our February 1st meeting, 7:55.
Good evening, is there anyone on the public line?
Unless we sit here, nobody will make a motion to adjourn or second it.
We have to wait till 7:55 to make it. You've got to beat it, you've got to beat it.
Yeah, we'll be-
7:55 right now.
Good evening, is there anyone on the public line that would like to speak to public forum, to the Board of Selectmen? There's no one on the line.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move?
There a second?
I'll second the motion, Ian.
Okay, any discussion? Mike, how do you vote?
Mike votes yes.
Ace?
Chase, yes.
Mary?
Yeah.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, have a good night.
Thank you.
7:55.
Thank you, Mary. See you, Jeff.
Good night.